Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to all.
To our riders who are with us this evening, thank you all so much for coming and sharing your thoughts and your suggestions to us. To our staff, thank you for everything that you do for this great organization. I know that some of you will be recognized this evening and we will be happy to celebrate with Mr. Arnt's comments about something great that our staff must have done again. And to our guests that are here, thank you for taking the time to attend our meeting this evening to see how VIA does business. At this time, I will do roll call. Trustee Sadio? Trustee Marn?
Lonely on this end of the day.
Trustee Ponik? Trustee Gambetta? Vice Chair Allison?
Here.
Secretary Harrison?
Here.
Trustee Thompson?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Trustee Bryant?
Trustee Morgan?
Here.
Trustee Marn, you're more than welcome to join us on this side if you get a little lonely. At this time, I ask that you join me for a moment of reflection. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Arnt, do we have announcements?
I think I'll do my announcements and reports at this time because we will have an item on the ATD, so I'd like to do that first because we have a number of folks in the audience tonight. First thing I'd like to do is inform the board that this is the beginning of a new fiscal year and within this fiscal year, and I'll turn this way as well, we have implemented employee recognition programs. So each quarter, we will have a van operator, a bus operator, a technician, mechanic, and administrative staff member recognized, and we'll do that on a rotating basis. So each month, we'll bring one or two of them forward to the board. So this is our first opportunity to recognize employees under that program, and we're beginning tonight with the Operator of the Quarter recognition. So our very first bus operator of the quarter is Rogelio Dominguez. Please stand if you're here. He's not here, okay? Well, let me tell you about him anyhow. He's been with VIA since 1994, has 17 years of bus operations without a preventable accident, again, a superlative record, a consistent recipient of many commendations throughout his career and a solid performer in the VIA bus rodeo. We'll talk about that in just a moment. We also have our first van operator, Joyce Gonzalez. Joyce is not able to join us either, but she's been with VIA for 27 years and has no preventable accidents since 2002, has received 10 of 11 possible excellence awards, which makes her the single most employees of all the operators with the most wins, and she's received 10 customer commendations just within the past 12 months. And so she has also won a certificate of merit for 19 years of safe driving. So those will be our two, our operator, bus operator, and our van operator of the quarter, and we'll try and get them here next month so that we can at least see their faces, but let's just give them a hand in their absence right now. We recently had our annual bus, van, and maintenance rodeo on October 17th, and as I said before, our first operator of the quarter, Mr. Dominguez, is no stranger to the winner's circle, and he took home the gold there as well in the van competition. Jesse Rodriguez took top honors. Jesse, are you here? Right up front, Jesse. He's our van operator of the... On the maintenance side, Mike Zamora, Mike, stand up. Mike Zamora took first place in, I think, six of seven events, individual events, six of seven, and he will be joined by Marcos Lopez and Daniel Garcia as our maintenance team. And Daniel Rosas won overall in the Hostlers Competition. Daniel here? He did a great job, give him a hand. Now, we also have a celebrity rodeo, and the same way that our bus operator is no stranger to the winner's circle, we're going to honor in absence Trustee Lester Bryant, who was back, has back-to-back championships in that category. He took top honors. Rounding out second place, Trustee Mark Harrison, and third place, local celebrity Hector Ledesma. Mark, I want to give you your winner's plaque. Hold on.
Well, thank you. You're welcome. Let me follow you around. All right. I'm a roof fleet. All right, thank you. All right, thanks.
I'm sorry.
And Mark, I'll give you Lester's secrets later. We'll tighten that competition. The annual bus, van, and maintenance rodeo is really kind of the high point for the employees because it gives us an opportunity to honor those people that put the service on the street every day or that really do the business of VIA. So it's one of the most exciting things we do all year, and we have a rodeo committee that puts in countless hours and lots of hard effort to make that all come off, including this year, again, we had events for the family. They had the best balloon artist that I have ever seen, the things that that man could do with balloons was amazing. So I would like to honor our bus dispatcher, Pauline Vasquez. Pauline, I saw you there. Pauline's been with VIA for 36 years, and she led the group again this year, and I thank you. Pauline, are there other committee members? If you'd stand up too, there are a few other committee members. I know Alva's there. Okay, Alva's there backing her up, right? So thank you, guys, because you really made it a special day for the people who are really special to us in this agency and then for the families as well. So thanks for what all of you did. So congratulations to all our winners. My next recognition, this is really unusual because in my entire career, I have never had an auditor who comes forward and said, "There's somebody here who's done a fantastic job in an area we audit consistently." You just don't hear that that often, and it's extremely pleasing to hear. And so running the inventory, the parts and materials needed to keep our fleet, is the responsibility of our Manager of Inventory and Materials Distribution, Henry Barayesa. Henry, are you there? There you are. So, he has enhanced the parts monitoring system by instituting daily cycle counts on high-dollar inventory parts, and this has enhanced the process and resulted in direct and indirect improvements in the productivity, efficiency, and cost effectiveness of the fleet and facilities division, and came to the attention of management through audit. And so that's really nearly unheard of, so congratulations. You really scored for us there. Thank you for all you do. Congratulations are in order for our wellness coordinator, Justin Krueger, for securing yet another award for VIA. Justin, Justin is, there you are. You're not wearing well pink. This time, we received a Healthiest Employers Award from the San Antonio Business Journal, an honor intended to celebrate our accomplishments in promoting healthy living for our employees. These efforts are embodied in the VIA Thrive Wellness Program, which is Justin's program, which encourages VIA employees to engage in regular exercise, adopt healthier eating habits, learning about specific health issues, and improve overall well-being. So Justin, another great job. Also within HR, VIA received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for our comprehensive annual financial report for FY '14. In order to receive this award, VIA had to meet high standards of program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure. So I'd like to recognize our Manager of Employee Services and Benefit, Orlando Gallegos. Congratulations to VIA team members who recently graduated from the San Antonio National Forum for Black Public Administrators Professional Development Institute. Man, that's a name, isn't it? Earlier this month, Transportation Secretary Mona Hazel and Fleet and Facilities Administrator Assistant Jennifer Sarald. Please stand and be recognized. There they are, front and center. They completed an eight-month program with UTSA College of Public Policy, which includes more than 40 hours of instruction from graduate-level UTSA professors and completion of a capstone project. So on top of doing their day-to-day work, which is much appreciated. So thank you and congratulations. Another achievement we can be proud of for this month, we set a new record for VIA trans ridership. In September, we set one record. In October, we surpassed that record to a number of 4,466 trips in one day. This is a significant accomplishment indicative of the efficiency of scheduling and dispatching and maintaining zero denials through that all. So Sylvia Castillo is our Manager of Paratransit Operations. Sylvia, you and your crew, thank you so much. Okay, I'd like to introduce a new member of our staff this evening joining us for his first board meeting and his first day of work, is Leroy Alockway. Leroy, where, I saw you come in. Leroy has 14 years of experience working in the greater San Antonio region with community leaders, neighborhood and civic groups, elected officials. He is the new Director of Local Government and Community Relations. He came to us most immediately from the Alamo Area MPO, where he oversaw planning and public involvement program. He received his Master's of Public Administration from the University of Texas at San Antonio, and in his free time, he is involved in Rotary International and currently working on his doctorate degree, but he may not have any more free time, unfortunately. Sorry about that, Leroy. Graduate of Leadership San Antonio class and served on the Steering Committee of Leadership San Antonio as well, and was selected as one of San Antonio Business Journal's Top 40 Under 40 Rising Stars. So thank you. Welcome aboard. But wait, there's more.
Great day.
Yeah? Via's 2015 United Way Pace Setter Campaign was a tremendous success, way overachieved what I was hoping for, actually. Together, VIA employees' contributions reached a record of $144,000, which represents a 22% increase over last year's campaign. It's also the sixth consecutive year in which VIA employees have raised over $100,000 over the course of that campaign. We have a large committee that's a part of that, but co-chairing at the management level is Marcus Peoples, who is in, I think, Southern California, conducting a peer review on behalf of APTA. But here tonight is Administrative Assistant Jessica Contreras. Jessica, where are you? Jessica, so Jessica does all the work, just so everybody knows. Thank you. 22% increase is tremendous success. The American Public Transit Association presented VIA with an Ad Wheels Award at their 2015 APTA Annual Meeting. The award was presented for the promotion of our 20th anniversary of VIA Youth Art Contest. The Ad Wheels Award are presented by APTA to acknowledge creative excellence of member public transportation systems and business members in advertising, communications, and marketing. Our promotion of the 20th Youth Art Contest was selected first-place award in the category of Special Events. We are honored to be recognized on the national stage for a program that has been very warmly embraced on a local level. And so I want to thank our Community Relations Coordinator, Jeriann Jones, and our Graphics Design Illustrator, Jeff Ramirez, for their work specifically this year. Jeriann, every month, we have something to recognize you for. Jeff is right over here with the camera, just so everybody knows. So congratulations on that award. At the end of September, the Propane Education Research Council and Metro Magazine presented VIA with a Top User of Propane Auto Gas Award. It sat on my desk for the last month, but it has Gary Glasscock's name on it. How do you like that? And so I'm going to hand Gary that award at this point.
He was an operator beforehand. Yeah, 36 or something like that.
So as you know, Gary has been instrumental in working on alternative fuel program for the agency. Our paratransit fleet is 100% propane, and we are working toward converting our entire fleet to compressed natural gas. So thank you, Gary. I just want to highlight, and again, Mr. Bryant is absent tonight, but he has taken on several significant roles at the national level. He was selected by the American Public Transportation Association to serve on the National Organization's Board of Directors. His selection was announced at APTA's annual business meeting and election of officers, and he joins representatives from across the country as one of 106 total members on the APTA Board of Directors. He was also selected as a Secretary of the APTA Transit Board Members Committee, and he serves on the APTA Foundation Board of Directors. And so we are very honored that one of VIA's board members is operating at a national level and keeping us very well connected. And he can hear, he's in Dallas, representing VIA at a transit conference there, so let's clap so he can hear it. One last award, all right? I want to offer congratulations to our champion and our board chair, Hope Andrade, who received a Public Service Award from the Friends of the American Latino Museum on October 24th. The award was presented at the 2015 American Latino Influencers Award Ceremony at the St. Anthony Hotel to honor the accomplishments and influence of Latinos as part of an effort to create an American Latino history branch of the Smithsonian Museum in Washington, D.C., a very noble effort there, and I can't think of a person who is more deserving of being recognized than Hope Andrade. So congratulations.
Great report.
And I will rest.
We expect that every month. And to all those that have been recognized, you know, I will share with you that you make us proud every day. As your board, we're very proud to be part of this VIA family, but this evening, you make us even more. So congratulations for all your hard work. We love the fact that, you know, you keep making news, and so congratulations, and again, we're all very proud of you. Let it be known that Trustee Sadio has come in, and that Trustee Bryant and Trustee Gambetta are attending the Rail Conference in Dallas.
And Trustee Ponik.
And Trustee Ponik, so that's a reason for their absence. And if I didn't mention at the beginning, I did call to order the regular VIA board meeting.
The ATD.
The ATD?
Yes.
I'm in the wrong agenda. Okay, I got so excited about all the celebrations, it's the ATD board meeting. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Four, Potential Uses of Advanced Transportation District Funds. Mr. Buchanan, oh, you're here already.
I am.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening, I'd like to have a discussion about some of the ongoing discussion out there about the Advanced Transportation District and some of the conversations we anticipate over the next several months with maybe some possible other uses for the advanced transportation dollars. So just a quick recap, the Advanced Transportation District, a quarter, one cent sales tax, divided up amongst the three entities or four entities into three different pies. VIA gets 50% of that, City of San Antonio, 25%, and Tex-Stop Bear County, another 25%. Over the last 10 years, you can see here that the revenues that are generated through the ATD have reached approximately over $61 million per year. Over the inception of the tax, VIA has been the recipient of about $247 million, and you can see the other two entities, about $123.5 million apiece since inception. So what do the entities use those funds for? VIA's use of the funds, we did fund a Super Street project. Those are the Super Streets up on 281 as part of the 281 project up there to help mobility up in that area, but a lot of those dollars go to our express and limited stop bus service. Almost all of those dollars go to those services, along with our Primo service, so out there putting buses on the street. The money is also used to back some bonds associated with the capital program, the Smart Move Capital Program, as we move forward and build those capital programs. And then some transit technology, advanced technology, traffic signal integration, ABL system allow us to see the buses out there. And there was a Starlight service that was discontinued in 2009. That was a late-night type guarantee home service, and the Vanpool service that is here in the community also is partially funded or some funds come out of the VIA ATD. This is just kind of a map of where the ATD routes are. You can see Primo there. You can see the express routes coming in from our parking rides. The Looper service is on there, so those are the routes that every single day, we use ATD dollars to put those buses on the street. The City of San Antonio has utilized their portion of the ATD to work on streets, sidewalks, traffic signals, some bus pads, vehicles detection, and some advanced transportation related to the movement of cars and motor vehicles through the streets. ADA ramps is also another thing associated with the City of San Antonio's portion of the funds. And then Tex-Stop Bear County, they have done several projects. I will also remind you that this is the pot that needs to be leveraged. So you can see here that basically a three-to-one total, the $270 million of ATD funds you saw there, has leveraged about $863 million of additional funds to bring about $1.1 billion worth of transportation improvements to the community moving forward. So this is a great use of those funds, to leverage those funds moving forward. So there are a couple of questions that staff has been asked to think about and moving forward in the conversation, and that is, what type of service improvements could be funded with additional ATD revenue? And VIA does have on the books some additional Primo and express services as part of our long-range plan. I'll remind you that these are existing express routes, once again, from the outline parking rides. These are basically our commuter-type services, moving people into the core from the outer areas. We do have as part of the capital program, I'll remind you, several parking rides, the Alamo Ranch Parking Ride, I-10 Parking Ride, Stone Oak Parking Ride that you awarded last board meeting. And so we will need to extend those services out to those, so that is part of our five-year capital program and operating plan moving forward. And then a little bit the Primo service. We have the existing Primo line that was opened in 2012, 6,200 average daily passengers on that line. And then we have the Southwest Corridor, which is planned to go into operations in late 2017. This is funded as part of the five-year capital program moving forward. But there's also a set of projects that are currently unfunded, and these are possible projects that could be funded through the use of ATD dollars. They include a San Pedro possible Primo line, a West and East Commerce line, so an east-west line for Primo, Pleasanton and the Broadway service, so up the Austin Highway Corridor moving forward. So these lines, if we were to run them in the Primo type of service, the 10- to 12-minute headways, we would require about an additional 163,000 man-hours, service hours annually. That translates into about an additional $16 to $18 million per year for our budget to put that service on the street.
And Bryant, that is the operating cost. That does not include any of the capital cost or fleet cost associated with those lines.
Yeah, that is correct, and I'll recap that at the very end. Most of the dollars I'll show you here today are purely operating costs. They don't necessarily achieve the capital cost needed to actually build the infrastructure associated with it. And then if we were to implement that full-level Primo service, we could look at 10- to 12-minute service to about 73,000 of our existing riders, or about 56% of the system would be covered with 10- to 12-minute service. So I think that's a pretty good goal moving forward, and one of the reasons we're looking at a Primo network that we're showing here. There's another question that is kind of hanging out there that is kind of being asked, and that is, what could we do to regular line service enhancements? These are enhancements that may not be able to be funded with the ATD dollars, but could be funded with additional dollars moving forward. So what type of changes could be made to regular line service to make it more, enhance the customer appeal to our service? So I'm going to show you a series of maps here. The series of maps are both peak service, so that's our early morning and evening commute type service, and then our regular service, off-peak service. So our system, 60-minute during the peak, these are routes that come every hour out there. You can see they're on the fringes of the service area, outside 410 mainly. So these are buses that arrive once per hour on our network. And then you can see it starts to fill in, 30-minute service inside 410 moving forward, up the I-10 corridor. There's the 20-minute service, the Looper comes into play, the express routes, and then 15-minute service, and then there's the 10-minute service of the Primo up and down Fred Road to the medical center area. So if you were to lay that all over, about 28% of our system route miles have 60-minute service during the peak period of major travel. And there you can see the breakdown off to the side. So off-peak, this is non-commute type hours, you can see a lot more hour service associated with the system out there. It's come inside 410 on several routes. You can see the 30-minute service fills in, the 20-minute service, and then the 15, and then the Primo still operates at 10. So if you look at that holistically, during off-peak, almost 50% of our system runs at 60-minute service. So we feel that there are opportunities there for improvement. We feel a system would be really attractive to customers if we could get that 60 minutes down to 30 minutes. So could we cut that in half, and what would that take? So we answered that question. If we were to move to 30-minute service on the system, so that would be a bus would arrive every 30 minutes all across the system, 35 routes would need to be touched, additional service would need to be added, that would be approximately 132,000 service hours, and about 22 more vehicles would be needed to add to the fleet, $13 to $15 million of additional operating on top of the Primo number that I showed you earlier, and about approximately another $11 million in fleet. And once again, this doesn't account for any type of street work or station stops or anything like that moving forward. So it is a cost. It is a cost that is greater than the ATD dollars that we're looking at here. So conclusions right now are ATD funding can be part of the solution, but it is not all of the solution to kind of where we want to get to with the 30-minute service and the express network and the BRT network that we'd like to have here in San Antonio. The dollar figure for that is somewhere in the $29 to $33 million of more money needed annually moving forward. And then additional capital needs would obviously need to be programmed and money found for those, and that would include the additional fleet that would need to be purchased. Route improvements in technology, there will probably need to be some improvements along the street, upgraded traffic signals, upgrade of the traffic signal control equipment to talk to the bus. And then support facilities, so as we add this fleet and we add these abilities, we'll have to take a hard look at our support, our support facilities, and make sure that we can keep up with this type of growth and this type of service out there on the street. Staff is working with the City of San Antonio and all of our partners through Division 2040 and SA Tomorrow. As part of that program, there's an implementation plan. And so what you saw here today is part of that conversation, what additional dollars and what type of service could those additional dollars provide if we were to move forward in the implementation plan, and that's what staff is working with in some of the conversations you'll hear over the next several months with the City of San Antonio moving forward. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the ATD and kind of our vision moving forward.
Members, any questions? Trustee Marn?
Having more frequent buses, what would be the occupancy rate of the buses, and would we somehow implement a smaller bus to be more frequent instead of using the buses we have now?
You could look at that. What we would like to see is if we operate more frequently, we would hope that we would attract more riders to the system, so we would hope to get higher occupancy on those buses moving forward. If you remember, one of the things coming out of our long-range plan survey was reliability and frequency, or made the transit system attractive. So we would hope that providing more frequent trips would attract more people to the system.
Trustee Sadio?
Yes. You mentioned on the listing about how each entity contributes or is...
and frequency, or made the transit system attractive. So we would hope that providing more frequent trips would attract more people to the system.
Trustee said, Eil?
Yes. You, you mentioned on the, on the listing about how the, how each entity uh contributes or is, or is taking the money. You mentioned that the city's using 24 positions. Do you know the salary ranges of those positions and what specifically they're used for related to ATD? And then if there's a comparison for VIA staff as well?
Yeah, I do not know exactly what those positions, but we were told they were to support like the traffic signal operations, the improvements associated with the traffic signal network, the streets and, and, and things like that. I don't know exactly what they are.
We have an equivalent number of staff members that are being paid out of VIA ATD funds from the VIA staff?
So our service would include an operator to operate the bus and ancillary support staff associated with putting that service on the street.
So it's a- actually utilizing the dollars for that service at that time? It's not like a three steps down the line kind of?
There's some overhead allocated to some of those, some of those, th- those dollars to provide that service out there.
And, and does this, has the city provided then a breakdown of all of the elements that they are funding specifically like, like the, the way it's done with the county?
The city has only provided what I showed here this evening, that the listing of the, of the different types of scopes of works that they have, that they have done.
So every year it's kind, they, they, they do a new budget every year?
That's correct.
Based on what they get?
That's correct.
But we don't know what they're-
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to look in their, their city document, their fu- funding document. We can pull that out. It may be part of the presentation that's coming in.
They're preparing that list.
Yeah.
Uh, as we go forward to the, the traffic, the transportation, technology and-
Utility.
Utility committee.
But isn't that something that they should be providing to the city council during the budget session where they would have that one sheet of paper that says, "How I'm using specific funds"? Because they have to do that for, for federal funding and for other funds, they, you would think that they would also have it for the ATD funds as well.
I just know that for that committee that they are charged with providing that information. So we should have that information as part of that presentation.
We, we will ask for that information, see if we can, we see that.
Members, any other questions?
One follow-on question.
Yes.
This board is also the ATD board.
Yes.
The VIA employees are also the ATD employees. Would the VIA audit department also be the ATD audit department? And could that be something that would be audited, the use of those funds or, or how they're, or, or for, for positions? Who, who checks to see that those monies are being used in the way that they're supposed to be used? I think that's the root of the question.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
Is it an oversight that we would have in any way?
Since we're looking at you, Ms. Elder, I guess that uh-
See, my, see, my starting point is that the, the, of those three, three pieces of money, the part that stays with VIA, you know, of course, in the budget process, you see that. The part that is designated county, TechStop, all those projects are approved by the ATD board and then move forward. The projects for the city of San Antonio do not, those dollars don't come through us other than passing through, and the ATD board has no responsibility or require, they have no requirement for the-
Statutory mandate, they have requirements for, for those projects by the ATD.
So that, is it an honor system? We just assume that they're going to use the money for the project?
Yes. The statute requires the agency to- The statute requires the-
Still?
Okay. The statute requires the agency to follow the statutory middle. So there is uses outlined in the statute for the city to utilize them.
Okay.
If you'd like further explanation on the statutory requirements, I could explore that with you further in the session.
Trustee Martin, do you need, do you need further?
No, I, I, I understand the situation as it exists now. I just want to make sure that if there's an oversight, as the chairman of the audit department of VIA, and hence ATD, is there an oversight that, that, that we should, that we are responsible for? And, or is it just they get a check and whatever they want to do with it is whatever they decide? Who, I, I'm sure that they have to follow the law. Who's the policeman who makes sure that they're following the law? Or is there?
There is the, oh, and statutorily-
Yes.
There are provisions that outline how those dollars-
Oh, I, I fully understand this. And when I came here this evening, there were signs that said 45 on San Pedro.
You go say you make, you make-
I understand, someone pulled me over. But who pulls over the city?
But as a board, as a board of ATD, don't we have that authority?
We will, we will explore that.
Okay, all right, please do.
Because it's different.
Because I think it would, it would help to clarify our role in that. Okay.
Sure.
Members, anything else?
One quick question, Madam Chair. Uh, Brian, on the timing of the discussions with the city of San Antonio, is that before this calendar year ends, next year, well, just generally?
Yeah, we, we were informed here recently that that may occur as soon as beginning next week, but, but um still yet to be scheduled, but I do believe it will occur this calendar year.
The, the briefing is scheduled right now in December.
That's right.
Uh, but they're looking at maybe advancing it into November. So one way or the other-
It'll happen this year.
Would be this year.
And so how does that relate with respects to the timing of the LGAC action?
The LGAC meeting is in two days.
Thursday.
So it would be-
And so how does that request impact the LGAC request? Or does it?
I don't believe it does. I mean, we've had some discussion about, about the impact of the, of the fair discussion on the overall budget, but it, but it does not impact it directly.
I would think it would, but you guys are going to the meeting, so I'll defer to you on that one.
We're going to be asking you to join us at that meeting? I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, we've heard uh that uh there are issues regarding our frequency.
Uh huh.
So if, um, if the community uh expects us to increase our frequency and uh what we're saying is we, we can do that, but this is how much more it's going to cost us. Uh, is the city able to designate some of their funding for this?
Um, we have had discussions with the city about the ATD and other possible funding, but nothing has been um ironed out. But there's no reason that they couldn't allocate additional funding from all, any revenue source to VIA if they so elect.
So that, that discussion has started?
It has.
And we are exploring that?
We are.
Okay, good. And you will keep us updated-
Absolutely.
Uh, on that because I think that this could be a great solution uh for this community to meet the needs of its riders uh with more frequency. Good.
Thank you.
That would be a great way to increase ridership.
Absolutely.
And also the city has, uh, in the previous discussion, the presentation to the, on the B session at the committee was going to be by city staff only, and we are now having a joint presentation. So that's a positive step forward.
Yeah. And I believe that uh the only way we can do things in the future is through partnerships. So this would be a great partnership where we all come together and, and make the best use of these funds. Great, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Members, any other questions before, Mr.? Okay, good. No action is needed, right? It was just discussion? All right. Um, anything on the agenda number five or six? Ms. Elder? No? Okay. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Question.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The ATD regular board meeting of October 27th is hereby adjourned. All right. A little, a little note. We're now moving on to um calling to order the regular VIA board meeting of October 27th. Mr. Art, do we have a CO report?
No, no additional information.
Okay. It was all included in the ATD report.
Correct, correct.
All right. Uh, agenda number four, citizens to be heard.
Madam Chairwoman, we have eight citizens to be heard tonight. If you would like to speak up at the front, you're welcome to when your name is called. Or if you want to speak from where you're sitting, please raise your hand and a microphone will be brought to you. Tracy Harris.
There you go. Tracy Harris.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tracy Harris, and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't stand because I have an injured foot, but I would like to speak to you about something that um has, has recently been going on in several of the different buses and at, at bus stops. Um, when uh people that are disabled um are trying to get on the buses or get off the buses, uh, people um assault them, they treat them very disrespectfully, they get treated like the bus drivers just don't care, you know? They're, um, I feel, I've been disabled since I was seven years old, and I feel this is a very, very disrespectful thing for us as customers of VIA. And, you know, I have many friends that speak to me about the officers, security officers, um, the bus drivers, you know, they, they just act like we'll do what we want when we want, you know? And I really do feel like when the people, um, i- if they're disabled, just because you can't see that they're disabled, just because you can't tell, that does not mean they're not disabled, and that does not mean that you should treat them with disrespect or hatred. Because they did, they, we deserve just as much respect as any other person who walks on that bus, especially since we pay for it. And I was actually assaulted when I was on the bus. The bus, the bus driver, they did not do nothing about it. The security guards did not do nothing about it. They gave me a false report. They did not take me to a hospital. Now I have to wear glasses. Thanks, thanks to the person, you, you know, this is, this is totally irresponsible, and it makes VIA look very disresponsible. And the people who are disabled feel very ashamed of VIA because you're not doing anything about this, and it's not really necessary. Because I continue to say, we deserve just as much respect as any other man or woman that walks on that bus. Because we pay to ride the bus just like they do. Thank you for hearing my words.
Thank you very much.
David Thompson.
Hi. I'm here to uh talk about changing a policy. Uh, I've seen so many discrimination uh against the people that ha- are handicapped. When they see a person walk up, they have a walker, a cane, or any other physical problems like a, a broken leg or, or they're limping up to go up to the bus, the bus drivers should be automatically kneeling that bus, lowering the bus. But does the bus drivers do it? No. And then there's people that have shopping carts, and they, guess, you quote, the policy is you have to request the, have the bus kneeled. It should be an automatic kneeling of the bus. If the bus driver sees a person with problems, then they should kneel it. They should not have to request this, this. So y'all need to change this policy of not uh doing this service. It's a form of discrimination, and so I'm not appreciative of uh VIA, VIA discriminating against the handicap. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Anna Cady.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anna Cady, and I'm a volunteer with the group Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. My organization supports responsible gun ownership, and we believe respect for the Second Amendment can go hand in hand with common sense gun reforms, which are supported by the ma- majority of Americans, and data show help reduce gun violence in the United States. Our organization is a nonpartisan grassroots movement, and our volunteer moms from across Texas lobbied lawmakers and testified against the open carry of handguns at the Capitol during the 84th legislative session earlier this year. The gun lobby is attempting to bring guns into our daily lives, into places that they don't belong, and the open carry of handguns is an extension of that. Proponents of open carry argue that such a practice is an effective personal and public security measure. While we have no hard evidence whatsoever from any state that the open carry of loaded firearm actually deters crime, we have plenty of evidence that open carry creates a landscape where fear, anxiety, and intimidation are things that are forced, that we are forced to tolerate. I'm sure you're aware that gun extremists in Texas make a point of long-arm open carry demonstrations that regularly incite fear and op- and to ordinary people moving through their daily lives. One of these, one of these efforts resulted in threats towards the state lawmaker, after which the state had to install panic buttons in, in law, in offices of lawmakers. We think it's worthwhile um reminding everyone that the public does not have panic buttons, and that open carry will inevitably cause panic among regular citizens. During the legislative session, the majority of Texans spoke out against open carry, but I think it's important to note that it wasn't just the average Texan. The vast majority of law enforcement also oppose open carry for various reasons, but primarily among them, uh, the fact having that openly displayed weapons on a scene of, when responding to an active shooter, situation is confusing, dangerous, and time-consuming for law enforcement. We also heard from military veterans who said they expected to see openly carried weapons while in a war zone, but were distressed to think they would encounter them in the same, uh, in the same course of their daily lives back home. Some will argue that open carries only extended to those with handgun licenses here in Texas, which is true, but they failed to point out that Texas has reciprocity agreements with 43 other states, many of whom have significantly lowered licensing standards than those established by the state of Texas. For example, in India, in Indiana and Alabama, um, they have no training or testing requirements at all. And other states such as Florida and Utah, they grant licenses from other states, uh, residents of other states. The inevitable consequence of this is that there will be, quote, "licensed Texans openly carrying handguns" who do not meet, meet the licensing requirements of people who can carry in Texas.
Heather Rosenquist.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Heather Rosenquist, and I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Along with other members of our organization, I lobbied, I called, I emailed and tweeted lawmakers, and trekked multiple times to the Capitol up and back uh regu- to fight open carry this session. You probably know that nearly two-thirds of Texans oppose open carry. The law enforcement oppose it, and that Texas legislature passed it into law anyway, making Texas the most populous state in the US to allow it. The only argument the proponents had in favor of open carry is that it may be a crime deterrent. However, there is no evidence that actually exists to support this belief. Um, however, uh, we think that Texans um think that a gun will provide them a form of protection. If they need a gun to provide a sense of protection, then the existing concealed carry can do that. So Austin Police Chief Art Acevedo, Harris County Sheriff Adrian Garcia, Houston Police Chief Charles, Charles McElhan, and Arlington Police Chief Will Johnson, all either actively testified against open carry or made public statements in opposition to its passage. So we think this is a very important and, um, you know, issue and shouldn't be overlooked. Law enforcement opposed open carry for a variety of reasons, among them the fact that it presents real challenges in ensuring public safety. So it's forcing law enforcement, enforcement to ask, "Does this person have a license? Is he a felon? Does this person pose a risk to others in the immediate environment?" When it comes to the prospect of open carry on public's transportation, who will ask these questions on an everyday VIA bus ride? Is that going to be the passengers? How about the bus driver? Uh, it's an additional and frankly, a frightening burden that the average citizen should not be forced to endure. So I'm going to try to speed up. Uh- So I'm going to try to speed up. We know from polling done during the legislative session that nearly two-thirds of Texans oppose open carry and 75% of Texas police chiefs oppose it. But we know opposition to open carry is likely even stronger here in Bear County. Just last week, Bear County District Attorney Nicola Hood expressed his objection to open carry. And although Texas lawmakers passed open carry over the wishes of two-thirds of Texans, we know that Bear County lawmakers and the views of Bear County constituents and VIA bus customers overwhelmingly opposed. Of the nine state lawmakers representing San Antonio that voted, seven opposed and only two supported it. So open carry creates an environment which moms feel we have to make additional assessments about our children's safety. We don't want to be responsible for threat assessments when we take our children to the museum on the VIA bus. Moms have enough to worry about in raising our kids. We don't expect to have to be afraid that openly armed person next to us might have a violent temperament. So if it's anything within your power to prohibit open carry, we please ask you to do so. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Madam Chair and other members of the board, my name is Jack M. Finger. Speaking of open carry, I think she may have something here. Maybe we should get rid of the Second Amendment too there. Yeah. If only our buses were gun-free zones. I don't think you would have had that shooting that you had last November on Route Number 90. Oh, wait a second. Our buses are gun-free zones. Oh, I forgot. Yes, maybe, you know, come to think of it, I wonder if that shooter had seen a number of the passengers with their open carry guns, maybe he would have thought twice, do you think? Hmm. And regarding our drivers on the buses, someone complained about that. I haven't noticed any real discourtesy among our drivers towards our handicapped challenged people there, with a few notable exceptions, of course, but still, in fact, it's the handicapped people who I've noticed don't want to fold up their carts on the bus at times, thereby making it hard for the rest of us to get through the aisleways there. The frequency that you, subject you mentioned earlier, well, I'm glad you see you're looking at increasing a few more buses along the roads there. You say it's going to cost a number of millions of dollars for it, but, well, I would think that the rate increases that y'all have approved last time just might be able to pay for that. Yes. Also, the HOV lanes that you're planning around Highway 281 north of 1604, I don't know if anybody's bothered telling you, but HOV lanes don't work. No, they haven't. I mean, any city around has used it to, take a look at for yourself whether there is really that much use of it and to see how many violators there are among the passenger cars that make use of that compared to the proper number of vehicles and buses that make use of it. Yeah, it's, and that HOV lane that you're planning for, the 281, it goes, some of us looked at that, it goes way out to the middle of nowhere. I mean, who lives out there? Have y'all taken a closer look at that? I mean, y'all had to have heard some of the complaints about that. See, the, another problem I have, bus drivers are allowed to be early on the routes. I didn't know this. I was stranded late at night, 1:00 AM in the morning, when a bus driver arrived at his point about three minutes, three or four minutes early and I missed him because of it. I was stranded for several hours there. They're allowed to be five minutes early. Now, how can we, the riders, trust VIA when they are that early?
Ferris Hodge.
About time you had a change in your policy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is this thing on? Okay. Somebody said about the bus driver carrying guns. Yeah, they carry guns. We see them. They got their big purse, satchel, whatever. We know it, they know it. Maybe y'all don't know it, y'all don't ride the bus. Y'all really don't care. Now, District One Councilman, I was over there the other day and he said, "A lot of the VIA policemen in the city are harassing the citizen." I said, "Yeah, what's going on?" And he said, "Well, we're not going to tolerate that." They got a law saying that you can't sit here over two hours, or you can't sit at the VIA information center over two hours. This lady, 80 or 90 years old, it was 100 degrees a few months ago. So security told her she had to leave 30 minutes or 45 minutes, then come back and she could sit another two hours. It was almost 100 degrees. I was sweating. And y'all need to change that old stupid policy that y'all have. Two years ago, 4th of July, I had some fried chicken and showed what's good. But anyway, to make a long story short, I sat down with paperwork and stuff, writing, and security threw everybody out of the, over there by Fridgeburg, I mean, everybody, from the babies to the newborn to the senior citizen, threw them all out. And then he said, "You got to go." I said, "Go where?" He said, "You been, you loitering." I said, "Man, you must be crazy." The loitering law in the past been three or four hours. You could always go to the information center and sit there when it's hot, cold, listen to your radio, cellphone, or whatever, and nobody bothered you unless you was fighting or cussing or something like that. And nobody wasn't doing, I mean, everybody got through it. I was the last one. And the guy came up to me and said, "You got to go." And I said, "Go where?" And he put his hand on his gun, you know, "I don't go for that." So I said, "First thing, you better take your hand off your gun because, you know, you're not going to do that in front of me." And he said, "Well, you still got to go." I said, "Give me your name and badge and all that." I gave it to VIA. VIA didn't do anything. See, our policy is two hours and anybody in there over two hours, we're going to throw them out. And that is wrong. That is as wrong as can be. You have cold weather, you have hot weather. I missed the bus last week because they had something going downtown at the convention center or wherever it was, and I had to wait another 45 minutes for the bus downtown. You know, and y'all need to be going out to the gang bangers and stuff like that. They was smoking dope and fighting and cussing and everything and the police came and started arresting them, you know, stuff like that. I can go out there right now. In another hour, they're going to be down there, the gang bangers. And nobody's doing nothing about the gang. The girls are just as tough as the boys. They are, they might be tougher. This guy called this girl to beat, B-word. She went and got her brass knuckles and she beat him down to the ground. Had a knife on one end and brass knuckle. She said, "Pick that so-and-so up and drag him across the street." They picked him up, dragged him across the street and dropped him. The next day, she was the head of the gang, he was part of the gang. And I want y'all to leave us alone, we're not bothering nobody. We had four businessmen, three weeks ago, standing up talking. And they said, "VIA told us to have y'all be removed from the bus stop."
Damon Mason.
And he said, "Well, we haven't did anything. How can y'all remove us from the bus stop?" Well, anyway, eventually y'all are going to get sued if y'all don't change that policy to three or four hours, especially if you're not bothering anybody. Something's wrong. Well, let me get off my bandwagon. I didn't get to sing my song tonight, but that's okay.
Chairman Wanda Arati, President Art, VIA trustees, meeting today is I, Daniel Mason. It's taken me a while to figure out where to start composing this diatribe about everything that's happened this month. There's a transportation forum hosted in Leon Valley on the 8th of October 2015 by Senator Jose Mendez that sought to prosecute the reported conversation about transportation that definitely needs to take place. Of the serious events, it is mass transit in which I'm definitely most interested, with which I'm most disappointed because President Art and Chairman Wanda Arati have forgotten that the whole purpose of that forum was to listen to the public. The recent response letter from the citizens to be heard confirms my suspicion that this is not being accidentally forgotten, but is potentially being ignored. You wish for VIA Metropolitan to be a multiple transit asset to the community? I find that crowd calling very difficult to believe. The September 2015 response letter made quite clear that VIA, under the question of my sanity, is going to face the fact that has a mainline transit operator on its perils has a felony pitcher at the service route he has to prosecute. It also makes quite clear that a very expensive mainline motorco, barreling down a public intermediate highway, has a 30,000 pound missile with real people on it. Because of that said mainline transit operator at the helm is either not a priority for VIA or is a necessary cost for some obscure strategic or tactical objective, the detailed identity of which eludes me at the moment. I'm seriously scratching my hair here, VIA. You're a quick-to-fire mainline transit operator that T-bones a motor vehicle, executing a right turn across the bow of the coach. Instead of going out to the violator in court and relocating the bus, I'm sure this does not keep happening. Still, when a mainline transit operator found not to be quite ready for prime time, you're at the first kid and gas like the messenger and then act on the message. You claim to desire 21st century transportation there within both, both within San Antonio and its outline neighbors, still, you're first kid and slay the messenger who gives you counsel to do as asked for that. You spout out this rhetoric about giving people the choice about how to get around, still you ignore the necessity of making private auto travel a huge headache so that there's less automobiles on the road, less need to build and upgrade more roads. Who would write by, want to advise, patronize, help anything who puts aid in that manner?
Thank you.
Daniel Dyjack.
Thank you and good evening. My name's Daniel Dyjack. I come from the Center for Healthcare Services Veterans Project and Veterans Treatment Court. I was here last month and I brought a proposal for it on reduced fares for homeless veterans that are working with veterans organizations. Is it on? Working with homeless veterans organizations to reduce the fare so we can get more vets the benefits of VIA. The project, the proposal I put in, I didn't get any word back. Directly after the meeting, I spoke to a manager of accessibility to VIA services and he said they would study it. I kept communications open through emails through the month and I called last week to find that the program right now is not covered by the current vets program that VIA uses and so we're going to need to look for other ways to have it happen. The reason I came in today was to find out if there's any more information, if it was actually, you know, addressed on the paperwork, I guess, but also to push forward the idea that a reduced fare of 50%, VIA loses new money because we're able to get, instead of 10 tickets, 20 tickets. The amount of money coming into VIA becomes the same. But if you look at it as 10 tickets that we're giving away free, then you say, "Oh, I can't do that." I don't look at it as free tickets. We're working hard to reduce homelessness. We've got about six organizations in San Antonio that are working hard day and night trying to reduce homelessness for the veterans. Today in a staff meeting, the word 22 is, the number 22 is brought up because there are 22 suicides a day by veterans and many of them are by homeless. And what does VIA have to do with that? Well, getting to and from services, getting to and from the VA hospital, it makes a difference. It's a start. It's a start, it's a foot in the right direction. So I'm asking that the board continue to look at this proposal, continue to work on it. The sooner the better, the faster we do it, the less vets we lose. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairwoman, there are no more citizens to be heard.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, our consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Six, purchase of compressed natural gas CNG buses.
Good evening. Staff is requesting board approval to award a contract to New Flyer of America for purchase of 15 each 40-foot compressed natural gas buses at a cost of $7,345,385. I presented this item during last week's board work session, so I'll recap the information that was provided then and then mention an update to the presentation as well. The buses that we're looking to procure will be used to implement the planned June 2016 expansion of the E route. The procurement will be completed using purchase options we received from Dallas Area Rapid Transit. And as an update to last week's presentation, we have received approval from the FTA to make use of the options that Dallas has offered us. With regard to New Flyer of America, we have a longstanding relationship with that company. We operate more than 200 buses built by New Flyer and they perform very well for us. The funding for this procurement will be sourced from existing FTA grants that will require a 20% local match. So again, in summary, staff is requesting board authorization for the President and CEO to execute a contract with New Flyer of America for the purchase of 15 each 40-foot compressed natural gas buses at a total contract price of $7,345,385. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Members, any questions?
I'll just, if we have anything.
Yes.
Very quickly. Again, these New Flyers are coming to us by June 26 for the expansion of the E route.
Yes, sir. We've got, we've got New Flyer on the hook and are pushing them to get a quick delivery.
So that's a very good thing that you attach it to the Dallas Fort Worth contract. That's usually a less, less time to wait for the procurement to go through because it's attached to an existing procurement for another agency. So when we work together like that, things go in a lot more fluid fashion. I do agree with that very much. So New Flyer is actually a very, very good bus and it is AlTuna tested, so I agree with the style of bus that we're using. And being CNG, it's a cleaner environment bus and it's also a quieter bus for the downtown area. So very commendable. Thank you. And on that note...
Members, any other questions or comments? Secretary Harrison, do we have a motion? I can tell that you would like to make this motion.
Yes, the motion approve the contract for the New Flyer purchase.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Look forward to seeing those new buses soon.
We'll get them on the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, for being so diligent on that process with FTA.
Yes.
Yes, very much so. Very smart.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, President and CEO Performance Evaluation. Vice Chairman, do we have a motion? Billy, you have a resolution?
Yes. In connection with completion of the performance evaluation of the President and CEO is required under the terms of his contract, move that the Board of Trustees authorize additional compensation of $15,000 pursuant to Section 5 Performance Evaluation of the President and CEO Employment Agreement.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or question? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Mr. Art, which, a motion carries. Mr. Art, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. First of all, I want to thank the board for putting this process together. I think it's a very helpful process. It will be extremely helpful to me moving forward. I think it would be helpful to anybody following me at some point in history. I know it's not a simple process. I know that in the industry, that these processes are not common. And so I think that not only is it a betterment to me for a greater understanding of expectations, but I believe the board probably benefited from the discussion as well. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve VIA. This is a great community. We have many wonderful things ahead. I think we've done a great deal over the last year, but I think we have even more exciting things in the offing as we move forward and identify the projects out of the long-range plan that we're updating, particularly this spring. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Mr. Art. We certainly look forward to working with you and look forward to a great year and to the board. Thank you all very much. I am so proud to say that during this evaluation, we had 100% board participation. So board members, congratulations. This is certainly one of our responsibilities. Item Number Eight, Ms. Elder, do we have any, do we have anything on legal briefing? Okay. Well, I hesitate to go to Agenda Item Number Nine because this is my first board meeting where I have a footrest, so my feet are not hanging and I have, I can sit all the way back because I now have a little cushion that allows me to sit back. So I'm very comfortable, I think. Now, you know why I always made the board meetings kind of go quickly because I was so uncomfortable, but I am enjoying this. A very special thank you to Ms. Lauren Garcia who thought of getting me a footrest. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
We have a motion, the second. Meeting, do, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is here, meeting is hereby adjourned and thank y'all very much. Have a good evening and save for Halloween. Have a good evening and a safe for Halloween.